Online. We're not quite ready yet. Oh, we just clicked 5:30. Ready?
Well, now we're ready.
Doug's gonna log this in the flash.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
That was the full present there.
Roll call.
Uh, Jenny David.
Here.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Here.
Brenda Simmons.
Yep.
Greg Scott.
Here.
Any additions or corrections to the agenda, commissioners?
I have none. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll support.
Motion Commissioner Scott, support from Commissioner Simmons to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item three, declaration of conflicts of interest. Commissioners, are there any?
I have none.
Item four, review of minutes. April 25th, 2024, regular meeting minutes.
I'm making a motion to approve.
I'll support.
Motion Commissioner Simmons, support from Commissioner Wiltie. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Um, 4B, May 2nd, 2024, committee of the whole meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Motion Commissioner Simmons.
I'll support.
Support from. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item five, public comment and agenda item manners only. Any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Item six, we correspondence, we received correspondence from Asaba Valley Committee Mental Health Authority related to meeting agenda and minutes. Northeast Michigan Community Service Agency related to the meeting agenda and minutes. Richard Castle Consumers Energy related to Consumers Energy Reliable Roadmap. Those have been received and filed. Item seven, consent agenda, 7A, resolution to authorize purchase of cyber liability insurance.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm gonna do both. I was just gonna give recognition to the.
Yeah, let's do. Let's do.
So we have six, uh, excuse me, 7A, the, uh, resolution to authorize purchase of cyber liability. That was, this resolution is sponsored by Administrator slash Controller Timothy Delahoney. Cyber crimes that target local governments have become more common resulting in information being lost, damaged, or stolen. This policy will protect the county against the costs specifically associated with data breaches. The county insurance advisor, Google, even shop the market through a broker who developed a list of leading cyber carriers. Node International is the recommended carrier because of their pricing and deductible offering. Node International is also considered to be leader in the municipal liability insurance business. Approve of the resolution will authorize purchase of cyber liability insurance as presented in quote option one by Node International at a cost not to exceed $11,153.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
I support.
Motion Commissioner Scott, support from Commissioner Simmons. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Greg Scott.
Yes.
Item 7B, resolution to appoint a transit director. This resolution is sponsored by the Transit Advisory Committee. On February 8th, 2024, the Board of Commissioners approved Resolution 24-21 to adopt job descriptions and pay scales for the positions of transit director and assistant transit director. The Transit Advisory Committee interviewed three candidates to fill the transit director position on April 18th, 2024, and asked two candidates to participate in a second interview conducted on April 25th, 2024. After deliberation, the Transit Advisory unanimously recommended offering the transit director position to candidate Sheila Schmidt. Approve of the resolution will authorize hiring Ms. Schmidt assigned, assigned current director Ray Blamer as mentor to Ms. Schmidt for a 90-day trans, transition period, and authorize necessary adjustments to the transit fund budget in accordance with the resolution.
I'll make a motion that we appoint the new transit director.
I'll support.
Motion Commissioner Wiltie, support from Commissioner Simmons. Discussion?
Enough about it.
Roll call vote.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Greg Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes. New business. We got claims. Claims total $224,745.27, and Commissioner Mayhew and I reviewed claims. And I don't, I don't recall anything standing out.
Not this time.
I didn't even call Tracy. Pretty low, actually.
I saw, I saw a purchase of, I'm glad the sheriff's department's here. Um, let me find it here.
There was some education on there.
No, it was, uh, it was, uh, maintenance or something like that. Um, it's, it's termed, uh, gas, oil, and grease. Uh, we have a number of what appears to be, uh, oil changes at $110. This one's $488. You guys have to remember that one?
Uh, we seen a bunch of oil changes on there. I didn't think there was anything out of the norm there.
Well, 488.
Yeah, I don't recall that.
Okay, alright.
Do you have any idea, Paul?
Many.
Off the top of my head, no, I'd have to look at the actual.
Under gas, oil, and grease. I didn't know if maybe it got coded, coded wrong. It should have been repairs or something.
I would assume that it would be brakes then or something.
Would that be a repair rather than a gas, oil, grease?
Necessary. It wasn't done in conjunction with the, uh, oil change.
Okay.
So, uh, again, I, I guess maybe brakes, it wouldn't be, I don't know.
Okay.
I wouldn't be able off the top of my head.
Can you look into that tomorrow?
I can, yeah. Or what, where?
It, it was 488, the dollar amount. It doesn't say, um, doesn't say a, a car number or anything like that. 259, 301, 759.
Okay, I'll look it up.
Same as, that's, that's a road patrol.
Yep.
But division, isn't it?
There was conferences in there. There was some training in there. Um, yeah, I don't, we didn't have any questions for Tracy. Everything was pretty. Any further questions? That's a question we'll ask. Anything further, guys? Roll call vote.
Charles Wiltie.
Yeah.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Greg Scott.
Did you have anything else?
Was there a motion made?
Oh, no, jeez.
There was no motion made or supported.
You're right.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No motion. Who did the claims?
Well, usually it's the people that make the claims to do it.
Commissioner Mayhew, I support it.
Alright.
We have a motion with supporting. Any further discussion? I do that one a little backwards most of the time. Roll call vote.
Okay.
I apologize.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Uh, unfinished business. Commissioners, do you have any?
Unfinished, no.
I have a question here. Do you know this building and zones project completion list? Is this monthly, weekly? You have any idea what this is? It says dated May 9th. So I don't know if it's monthly or weekly or.
What are you, what are you talking about?
This Ogumah County Buildings and Grounds Department project completion list dated May 9th.
Oh, are you looking what's posted here?
Is this the bill, the building maintenance list?
Three report. Three report.
11B.
Ogumah County Building and Grounds Department project completion list. I, I don't know.
That's, that's Chris, that's Chris.
I know who it belongs to, but is it weekly, monthly, yearly, what?
It's a monthly thing. I think, I think, I think he gives us a highlight on a.
Nobody asks for monthly reports.
It was on here last meeting.
Yeah, we, I don't, was it last meeting?
Yes.
Well, then it'd be every two weeks then.
I'm, I'm thinking it's, it's every two weeks.
Cause that's when we ask for department head reports is every two weeks.
Yeah.
Alright.
We second before.
Any other unfinished? Business? Right. Oh, there's, there's a.
You didn't wanna talk about the current events or anything?
I, I'm at, what current events?
Elections.
I'm asking commissioners, any unfinished business? Is there anything you wanna talk about?
I don't.
I, as far as where you're going with that, I, I thought that should be on the committee of the whole, but.
Okay.
I'm asking, yeah.
Yeah, I think committee holes were, should be.
Uh, Administrator, Controlers report. Unfortunately, Tim was not able to be here today due to unforeseen circumstances. Um, there is a report, um, on our iPads, I believe I seen. Yeah.
Yes, there is.
Uh, elected officials in the department had reports. MSU?
Evening. I'm Julie Darden, MSU Extension District Director for our District Four, includes Ogumah County. And, um, tonight is my annual report presentation. I've placed a printed copy at each of your, um, each of your seats. You've heard me talk before about the work that I do with extension. Um, I really, really like my job, and so I will try and keep this brief. Because I know we're moving at a fast clip tonight. So our work is trying to be responsive to the needs of the community. Um, wherever possible, we can bring the resources of Michigan State University and the wider land grant university system to, to communities and their needs and try to help solve those. Our work is based in research that's done, um, of best practice, and we work hard not only to create that research at the university and in, in communities with people, um, but also, uh, to teach that and then to bring that out into communities wherever possible. That's sort of the three-pronged approach of land grant universities. So to do that, um, people ask us questions all the time, and we get questions and do programming that we hope will be of value to citizens. In 2023, uh, folks from Ogumah County participated in community development and natural resources programs, which included, um, materials that we have on inland lakes, rivers, um, you know, things like preventing harmful alba blooms and the impact of those that can happen on coastal communities or inland lake communities when, you know, when eutrophication happens and, uh, and the balance of those ecosystems goes out of, uh, out of balance. And in addition to that, um, you're aware, I've shared with you before, some of the programs that we have for local elected officials, like the governing essentials, um, series that's, that will be offered again in August and December, which cover things like parliamentary procedure and having constructive, um, governing, uh, and the, the rules of, of how you would do your work as county commissioners. Um, again, in 2024, we will offer the county commissioner, new county commissioner training. Um, it's gonna be an interesting thing because, as you are aware, county commissioner terms are shifting from two to four years. And so I think our team will think about how to do more training and in, in between those election years uh, to kind of help county commissioners and elected officials to meet the needs of, of those terms. And with the longer term, there may be more vacancies, so that we may have commissioners coming in across the whole state. I'm not just talking about here. Please don't interpret this as any kind of negative wish to you all. Um, but we may have people joining county commission boards outside of election years more frequently. And so that education can be made available more frequently. We offer health and nutrition programs. As you're aware, we serve people across the whole lifespan. So we have programs that, that are targeted to meet parents who have new, who are expecting children or who have young children, um, and the nutrition needs that they have. Uh, we have programs that are designed to serve kids in schools, and we have, we have those programs going on all the time and targeted at a curriculum age that suits them. So we're teaching more complicated con, concepts, the older the youth are. But generally, we're trying to help kids understand how to feed their bodies and make themselves as healthy as possible. And then with adults and older adults, oftentimes it's, you know, responding to health needs that they have or desires that they have. Um, and maybe even managing chronic illnesses. Our curriculums are designed to help reach those folks and help them. We offer food safety and preservation, uh, courses, help people do things like can, dry, freeze, preserve the food that they have. Um, we are going to begin offering, uh, we have currently the capacity to offer, uh, pressure can or testing here in our office, but helping people understand, you know, how to make sure their equipment is working so that they can be sure that the food that they're saving is gonna remain wholesome and sustain them over time. And again, we offer other health education programming, including, um, you know, anger management, disease management. That's all been based in research and, um, helps people to, um, live their life to their fullest. One of our signature programs, you're all aware, is our, um, 4H programs that deal, works with youth. Um, we have a, we have a very robust program here, and we did add a new program coordinator in 2024, Stephanie Stevens. She's done a really outstanding job getting up to speed. Um, I don't know if you recall, but her first week was the week of the Ogumah County Fair. So she really hit the ground running and then kind of had to adjust to a different tempo after the fair was over. Um, but she's done a really good job, and we've continued to grow our program. Couple of things that are highlighted in this printed report include, um, the archery program in partnership with the Ogumah Sportsman's Club. Um, and then the programming that we did in partnership with area libraries. Um, and that was done, um, under the prior program coordinator. Some of those relationships were set up, but we think it's really positive. And we did have, uh, we did have a record number of youth, um, engaged in the county fair marketing livestock, uh, in 2023. Um, and I think that trend is likely to continue. Lots of kids wanting to be involved in those 4H programs and in those livestock programs so that they can, you know, learn through those projects. And that's really the, the core of 4H is learning with hands-on, uh, projects and learning by doing. Um, we have programs for kids from five to 19, and, and we're really, uh, excited about the, the growth of those. And we have a specific program in Whittmore Prescott Schools where we have a staff person who's based in the school. And her work impacts all the kids at the elementary level, and then she does specific programs for middle and high school students about career exploration. She coordinates a job fair at the school, um, so kids can learn about current employment opportunities and then future, you know, career and employment opportunities. And finally, agriculture and agribusiness is really the heart of what started the extension program and, and Michigan State University. And our work touches every form of production in the state, um, from field crops to horticulture, fruits and vegetables, animal agriculture. And then in addition, responding to all the emerging issues that happen within agriculture. Helping farms maintain profitability, training them on how to manage their, their enterprise and their staff, uh, depending on how, how many staff they may have, creating efficiencies, um, allowing them to understand how they can successfully plan for their, farmers can plan for their retirement and succession and passing on a farm to either the next generation or a new owner. Um, and then adding value with opportunities. And Phil is a real, Phil Durst is, uh, our senior educator here in Ogumah County. And he's really passionate about making sure especially dairy farmers can connect with opportunities to add value by making cheese, by making ice cream. He's, he'd really love to see more yogurt production in this. And so, um, he brings that, uh, to farms in Ogumah County and beyond. Um, and then we have programs, uh, about farm stress management, um, animal health, and there's some emerging issues that Phil has been able to talk about with you. So this is really not about 2023, but currently what's happening. There's a general, um, general order from the Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development that went into effect yesterday, May 8th, regarding, um, highly pathogenic avian influenza, and Phil was able to talk to me about it today and, and give you some updates. So all Michigan dairy farms are expected to implement some of these changes. One of those first changes is to designate someone in the operation as a biosecurity manager. Biosecurity essentially is trying to keep any, um, illness or anything from reaching the farm and also preventing that illness or, or pest or disease issue from coming out of the farm. So essentially, you create a line of separation between the inside of the farm and the outside of the farm and try to create some really positive practices so that farms can maintain the health of their animals and maintain productivity. Farms are being asked to establish cleaning and disinfecting practices, um, at those, at those locations and also maintain a logbook of people who are coming on to the farm and who are leaving the farm. So that's all vehicles and individuals. Um, in addition, any cattle that are, any dairy cattle that are lactating and those in the last two months of pregnancy are prohibited from being exhibited until there are no new cases of highly pathogenic avian influenza or HPAI in dairy cattle for at least 60 consecutive days. And no dairy cattle of any, from an infected premise may be exhibited until further notice. And then in addition to that, um, uh, the highly pathogenic avian influenza does impact poultry production and poultry farms. And so all exhibitions or expositions of poultry are prohibited until such time as there are no new cases of HPAI in domestic poultry for at least 30 consecutive days. So this may have an impact on fairs and exhibitions that are coming this summer. But we at Michigan State University Extension will be working closely with the state veterinarian, with the Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development, our partners at fairs and exhibitions, and also, uh, with our clubs and our leaders to make sure that they have the information that they need so that we can create the best learning environment for youth and the safest environment for animals and people. And if there's any questions about any of those things, I will do my best to respond, and if it's beyond my knowledge, I will make sure that I get an answer back to you. Here in Ogumah County, we're supported by a millage that passed in 2018, and voters will be asked to reconsider the question of the millage in 2026. And that funding really does anchor state funding and federal funding here in the county. And so it's a really important thing that people have chosen to invest their tax dollars in us. We take that responsibility very seriously, and we also try to make sure that we're giving people value back. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and thanks for your time and attention.
I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions. I just, as the commissioner liaison with MSU Extension and getting, uh, Julie and Stephanie and Phil, um, you guys do a great job. And I mean, this is proof right here, you know, there's a lot of things going on in the county. And it's important that our residents know this, and I'd like to see this number increase because you guys have a lot of great programs.
Absolutely.
Thank you for what you do.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for the information.
Thanks, Julie.
On our iPads also used to have the building and grounds, building inspections, register of deeds, and the sheriff's report as well. Um, Manners on the floor, any commissioners?
None.
Motion for adoption?
Does undersheriff have anything like to?
Oh, I went by the elected officials, the rest of them.
Uh, no report.
It's on the iPad. You did see that, right?
Yeah.
Nothing to add?
Nothing to add.
Nothing?
I'll tell you, we changed our canvas today. Uh, the election results are certified. We're good. That's it.
Election results?
Yes. You are.
They're certified.
They're certified, yeah. So they're official. That's what that means, yeah. Oh, I do wanna say one thing. I did finally get all of the candidates for August entered into, um, my computer program. So if anybody wants a list, a compiled list of everything, just get ahold of me and I can give it to you.
Thank you. Jeff, do you have anything to add? Thanks, I see your thumbs up. Okay. Uh, Manners on the floor, any commissioners? Motion for adoption? Uh, Commissioners report. Commissioner Simmons?
Um. No, I am nothing.
You're bent, okay, nothing?
I was busy working on, uh, issues for the county.
Commissioner Mayhew?
Uh, I was at West Branch Township, and they're supposed to have a special meeting on that trailer house on Maze Road. Coming up, uh, they talked about, you know, the guy that came here bought a pavilion down there, yam locusts and them.
Oh, for the, uh.
Rock area.
Yeah. What's that? It's not what it's called. What's it called there?
A lot of hills.
Yes. So they did touch base?
Yes.
Oh, good. And he talked about writing grants, and he was pretty enthused about that. I don't recall the guy's name, but, yep.
So that's all I got.
Commissioner Scott?
Well, um. I just didn't say anything but far as rec. We were at.
I figured you'd cover everything. You talked a lot in the morning, so you took it all in, I think.
The cleanup and the RV park is done. We have 10 seasonals and they're, uh, they're not, not all there just yet. Um, we're, got a real good deal on a lawnmower that we're gonna buy.
Yep.
Uh, so, uh, things will, uh, I guess that, that we're full on the weekends already. Um, the nature park, um, our new water well for the hall will be started pretty soon. Uh, I did go up there after the meeting and, and we met with some potential donors that wanna help out the park. And so we talked, uh, talked with them some. Uh, the high banks, uh, Dan Johnson was there for the meeting. Uh, things are going together pretty good. They're forming the 51C3, uh, fundraising group that I'll bow. We, uh, we okayed some ORV signage because ORVs are coming on the property and, and they're riding not just in the parking lot, but in the property. So we wanna try to put a, curtail that. So, uh, Chris Vetter was there today. He shed some light about the ORV is, issues, and he's gonna help us with some grant writing, so, um. It's a pretty good meeting there. I went to the Roach Mission yesterday. Um. Heard a few things going on there. Uh, they talked, uh, they're talking about potentially doing a, a solar, uh, project there. Um, potentially. They've already started in the last couple of years doing a lot of, uh, of a, uh, energy efficiency. They changed over LED lighting. And for instance, they, they were talking to Hiasko County, and Hiasko has not changed their lighting yet. And their, their monthly electric bill's around $2,100, whereas Ogumah has changed their lighting and it's down to $1,100.
Wow.
Now, they sprayed foam the inside of the, um, shop earlier, well, late last year. They saw automatic production on heating costs there. Um, so they're really looking at a lot of different things. Um. They had some private road maintenance agreements that they updated and, and approved at Mills Township Logan. Um. They're gonna have some items up for auction, and then they do everything over Ranger bid. And then they're gearing up for the brine season right now to brine before the holidays. So, uh, yeah, and then they, uh, M dot, uh, M dot reviewed some intersections with them. And they're talking about, uh, high incident intersections, three that really stood out. Uh, Greenwood Road in Mills Township in the double curves. Uh, it's a, it's a high incident, uh, those curves there.
Right forever or talk about 33?
Uh, no, Greenwood Road between, say, the Boy Scout camp and right, there's those two curves there. Uh, mostly at night, people are missing the curves. Uh, Greenwood Road and M76, uh, there's a lot of them blowing the stop signs there. And then Row Road and Cook Road is, uh, it's a high incident corner too. And they're thinking a number of things there, maybe even rumble strips on the, on the road to, uh, to let them know that there's a stop sign coming. And so that was a, it was pretty, it was pretty informational meeting. Uh, and law enforcement, Commissioner, uh, uh, Wiltie and I uh, sat down with the Sheriff's Department after the last meeting and, and, uh, talked over some different things. We're, we're, uh, we're up a 50, filling $59,000 so far on, on housing, uh, room and board. That's the good news. The not so good news is we've only collected $400 so far. So, so we're working at it. We're working at it. Uh, we're, we're running some different scenarios and with, with the sheriff, uh, helping us out on, on alternate plans for, uh, correction, correct, uh, inmate housing, so, um. And then, uh, of course, we reviewed the budget and, in the, the overtime. So, and maybe Commissioner Wiltie might have something more to say about that. Other than that, no townships. I haven't had any township meetings yet this, this month, and so.
Commissioner Wiltie?
Uh, this is the time of month where I have a lot of my meetings coming up, uh, but to add on for the law enforcement, we did have a meeting last week with, uh, the undersheriff, uh, the sheriff, and time with, uh, the jail. And we, you know, we know that we have, um, a few options. And we, you know, we know that we have um a few officers short right now and that uh the industry. In whole is, you know, really hard to find certified officers. Um you know, they're out there trying to get uh some applications, but we're just not receiving anything, we know that we have a few. Current um sheriff department officials that will be retiring, so that is something that I know they're working hard on. Uh jail, of course, we're always looking at overtime, you know, the overall cost of the jail, Commissioner Scott added a few more things with that. I'm excited, I've got a bunch of uh real exciting meetings coming up, a lot of housing meetings coming up for next week. And I'll be jumping into a lot of my other meetings, um I know we're gonna talk at the committee a whole next week, but I do want to make a comment. Uh regarding this past Tuesday. Um you know, obviously, it sounds like May, there's usually not a very large voter turnout, but it's just really sad to see how low the numbers were. Um obviously, we we see the results, the way they came back, and I think, you know, from what we've seen from the residents of the county, how they voted. And from what we're hearing, from what I'm hearing from a lot of people I talk to, you know, I mean, the residents have spoken, you know, they don't want to pay any more in taxes. You know, one of the things, I understand, you know, these inflation costs, gas is gonna start rising again, these food costs, utility costs. You know, times are tough, but uh, you know, I think with, for the headly, I think we put a, we tried our best, you know, we spent. A long time trying to educate and that we knew that going into it, we had to have a consistent message and we needed to educate. You know, we had a lot of challenges with the way the wording was and everything else, but I really think we worked hard on that, we've got it out there and again, you know, the people have spoken. So um I think our job coming up here these next three, four months is even harder. And that we have some really, really hard decisions that we have to make, but we know as a county, our job, we have. To find that level of sustainability that we can afford, and in order for us to do that, we're gonna have to uh. Make some pretty serious cuts. So.
I would like to briefly add on to that, and then we'll continue this conversation at committee of the whole, but um I would like to uh give a special thank you to Commissioner Simmons. I know she put her heart and soul into that headly, spent a lot of time, a lot of energy. Um, a lot of passion went into that, so I do want to recognize her, she worked extremely, extremely hard for that. So thank you for that effort that you did put into it.
Thank you.
Um I attended Logan Township uh meeting, that actually went better. Uh did, was there, do you guys want to add something?
Commissioner Wilson put a lot of work into it too, thank you.
And he commented on it, but uh Logan Township, I uh, that meeting actually went quite, quite a bit better, our reporter was there. Uh maybe that's why, uh so that was nice to see a face, um it was, it did, uh did come together a little bit better. So more work to be done there, they talked about the assessor contract, they talked about the roads. Um I think I left at nine o'clock and I think it went to about nine thirty, so. That was pretty much most of it, uh some other legal issues that they're dealing with over there, so. Um Churchill, I attended that meeting as well this past week, Tim was there, talked about uh the headly, he he gave an excellent report, a lot of questions. They approved cybersecurity, they're paying for cyber security, their treasurer was pretty passionate about that, um. So they did approve that, they also talked about brining of the roads, um they put a little pavilion out there by South hurt Township. Um very nice little area, they used some of their COVID uh. Really funding to do that, along with a little paving driveway, they did some renovations to the hall, inside the hall. Um they've, they've done some really nice things over there, so if you get a chance and you're driving by, um the little picnic area for they can have birthday parties and. At nine one one, I had that meeting last night, um we did an evaluation on the director. Um Jesse, she's won a very, very, very good job over there. Um budget-wise, they're do amazing, overtime-wise, they go over every single meeting, uh she keeps that pretty, pretty tight. Uh also finalized the nine one one plan and we are submitting that to the state, so once we hear back from the state, that will then come to us. There were some changes to the overall nine one one plan, um I think that was it, and that was all this past week, we also did claims. Um that's it for me, did you guys miss anything?
I just one thing, um so appreciate everybody's approval for our new transit director. Um and we have a lot of good things going on at the transit, transit um is a great entity in the county that helps a lot of our residents. And I really feel that this new director is uh going to uh really fit in well. Um it's gonna take a little bit of time, but we have a really strong committee out there, we've got a lot of really hard, hard-working employees at the transit. Thank you for being here, man, um so I'm looking forward to that.
Anything else, commissioners? A general public comment?
You just got this, how's the advisory committee?
Yeah, those are on our iPads.
Okay.
Are those the meeting minutes, we're on our, are on our iPads.
Okay, I didn't know the commissioner report.
Any general public comment in the room, sir, did you have anything? Okay, any other general public comment? Any public comment on the phone?
You went off for a little bit, came back on.
She's at a track meet, a long ways away. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Uh all in favor, say hi.
Hi, hi.
Close, motion carries.
Hi, everyone.